Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. May I have a motion to open the meeting? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Drazie, all in favor? Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could just remain standing for a moment. We lost two longtime residents of Dobbs Ferry, and I just want to take a moment of silence in memory of Harold Binge. Harold was 83 years old when he passed away on January 30th, 2020. Harold was born in 1936 and attended Dobbs Ferry High School. He was in the Korean War, and he was a dedicated volunteer fireman, serving over 65 years at the Ogden Engine Company in Dobbs Ferry. He was also the Dobbs Ferry Village Fire Alarm Custodian for many years. Contributions may be made to the Dobbs Ferry Volunteer Fire Department, Ogden Engine Number One, or the American Diabetes Association. We also lost Matilda Theresa Hajar, better known as Tilly. Matilda was 95 years old, and she also passed away on January 30th, 2020. She survived by her daughter Cheryl, her granddaughter Colette, and her husband Jordan, her grandson Dale, and great-grandson Benjamin. She, Tilly, had a steady career as a bookkeeper in various businesses from auto sales to millinery until she found her favorite job at the Chase Manhattan Bank in Trust and Estates. So if you could just take a moment to silence and honor them. Tonight is the first item on the agenda. You'll see that we are going to finally be made whole again and with a full board. So we're going to appoint Mike Patino as trustee. First, I'm going to accept his resignation as the chairperson of the AHRB, and then we're going to swear him in. So, Mike, if you can just go over there.
Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and to carry out the duties of trustee of the Village of Dobbs Ferry to the best of my ability?
Yes.
Congratulations.
(applause) Oh, well, my kind of debate. Thanks. I specifically told him she wouldn't have to be the trustee.
(laughter)
Welcome to all of us.
No, I just said, everyone here, thanks very much. I look forward to working with you all, and I look forward to contributing.
Thank you very much, and we can take a seat. Thank you, guys.
It's gonna be annoying everybody, I think. I'd like to open it up to courtesy of the floor. Is there anybody here who would like to step up and approach the board? Anybody? Sure.
I'm Matt Payne. I'm a junior ward at the Zion Church, and I know we discussed this before, but I just wanted to kind of close the loop or gap or whatever. There's parking space just to the left of the entrance to Zion Church, which I know is supposed to be near. And it's a hazard for me coming down to Zion Church, and everyone turns to the left, no one wants to go to the right through that long traffic light. And it's one of those lights where you have to kind of pull out and hope no one's coming. And it does present a hazard to the congregation of Zion Church and hopefully the neighborhood. And I think you're suggesting maybe a motorcycle space or something.
Yeah, that way we won't necessarily take parking space away.
Which is a good idea.
Yeah, and we can keep the meter, too.
Yeah, but again, it says motorcycles only. Yeah, so I just wanted, I know you were working on this formally.
Okay, we definitely were aware of it, and we spoke about it, and I think it'll be addressed, I don't know when, but we'll certainly address that. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Lee.
My name is Clayton. I came here for advice from the officer of law. So I think it's taken me and me in Russell Place. I have many issues with our immediate neighbor, Michael Pusillo, at ten Russell Place for the last six years. The reason I came here today is regarding parking issues he has been causing and make the proposal for action. He owns three cars, which one of them does not use daily, and he parks them not in use in front of my house instead of his. For the selfish reason, he makes it easier to park other two cars in front of his house.
Just not to interrupt you, so you're having an issue with your neighbor regarding parking?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have a written statement that you can give to us that we can look over?
Yeah, I was gonna read it, but can we just, like, should they just?
Yeah, do you have extra copies?
We have some things to show you, some practice, some comments, and you can refer to them.
Okay, that would really go to which department?
It goes to the police, but I'll take them to give to the chief.
Yes, police and Russell.
The police told you to come up here?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
But I have a statement.
Go ahead.
But not that one.
Look, just, go ahead.
So the real problem is intentional behavior, misbehavior of parking. Either he parks his car far apart, but not enough to park in between, so we don't have a space to park at night, as in the picture one and two. And/or, Bexa, his car almost threatening close to ours.
These are all, he's, so owned by his car, but Mr. Pusillo, so the other cars were mine.
And this is on Russell Place?
Yes. So this info to my house, and this is the picture I've taken.
Can we keep that picture so I can give it to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, you can give it to the lady in white.
This is what he intentionally put in, so the block in the hall, blocks like that.
Or he, Bexa, his car almost threatening close to ours, as in the picture three in the war. But because of his involuntary action with bad intention, we often have trouble to find parking spots on snowy day, as our driveway is too steep to park on snow. So we contacted the police several times regarding this issue, and heard it's not illegal as far as the car sits there more than 72 hours at this public space. As he knows this rule and how the police reinforce them, he built this routine that he parks one of his set in front of my house with the weekday, and his van with the weekend. When the police came down to lock his tire, all he does is move in his car on each. At this point, so last incident happened last week, and the police officers suggested to come to the village board meeting and ask for help. Our street has lots of traffic during the day because there's a doctor's office at Russell Place, but we have, hopefully have very enough space to park all nine cars of our whole household in our street. So inclusion, I propose that the village mark the parking guidelines on our street to prevent him to take up more than what he really needs, so we all have a space to park and live in peace.
Okay, thanks. We'll be forward to the police.
We'll talk, the chief is coming in tonight, so.
So you're asking for us to actually mark spaces?
Mark the spaces, yeah. That's all we're asking.
So what he needed is like, be peacefully there. So he hasn't, obviously, some, explained, you know, his hostility, his strong hostility towards, I don't know, these, of course, we complained that his behavior is one of why it's moving space all the time. So we never have a chance to use that spot, just in front of my house, at least for the last three months.
Really? Okay. We will talk to the police chief about it.
Yeah, so because of, so in response to our complaint, so he showed his.
Could you go to the microphone and identify yourself?
So he showed his garage.
Can you tell us your name, please?
My name is Young Moon Joe. It's my wife. So I already showed two pictures there. So he showed his garage on this bus. So he tried best to make us delicate in all kinds of ways. So he did his, he, he was so best, I showed a couple of pictures there, he just tried to box us out of this space. So most, most days, he put us like that. Sometimes on snow days, we had a really hard time because he just blocked that road, so we had to spend a lot of time to find another spot for other of us. And this is another picture here, what is in my list. My car in the middle is sandwiched by his cars. So this will clearly show his intent.
Okay, leave it with Charlene, and we'll talk to the police about it.
And another one, as you can see here, lot of space in, in front. So this is my car here. His car intentionally moved back and put close enough to threaten us. So this is what he's doing.
Okay.
So we don't wanna make any trouble, but we just wanna live peacefully. So we just suggest that as a new by, what we're gonna do now, so one of the folks who suggested us to pop the story here, and he suggests that, ask you guys to allow the, join some parking lot on this space, that it all may come to each of us, who is.
Okay, we will look into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Lee.
Lee Constantine, I just would like to take a quick opportunity to congratulate the mayor. It's my first time here.
It is your first time here.
Yes, so I wanted to congratulate you.
Thank you.
And I know you will certainly work hard for the people, because you have always been for the people, and you're very fair.
Thank you.
And I look forward to having you as our new mayor.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to congratulate trustee Patino as well.
Thank you.
And also, all of you have been reelected. Okay, I think we have a really good board. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Rob Aaron, Ken Cricket Lane. I'm here on behalf of the PTSD St. Croods Committee, the Sustainability Task Force, and also as chair of the Traffic Committee. I just want to thank the board and Charlene for allowing us, and Chief Gobara for allowing us to set up a table at the, during the sale of the station parking permits. We had some flyers, we sold some piece car magnets. We had a really good response, asking for people to think about how they drive, to drive more responsibly or as responsibly as possible when they're going to and from the train station. It was a big success. If you went, you go downstairs, you'll see the board where over 100 people have signed that they will, they pledge to drive responsibly this year as they got their parking permit. So I just wanted to thank everybody who did sign in the village, and to all of you.
Thank you.
And thanks for all the work you're doing on that.
Anybody else? So let's move into matters requiring action. Number one, consider resolutions adopting a home rule request asking the state legislature to adopt Senate Bill S. 7272 and Assembly Bill A. 8813 to amend Chapter 329 of the laws of 2015, amending the vehicle and traffic law related to the residential parking system in the village of Dobbs Ferry in the county of Westchester in relation to making such provisions permanent. Charlene, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, ma'am. The residential parking is something that must be requested to, from the state, and it is done through a home rule message. It has been done, I think, three times so far, and the state, in its infinite wisdom, has decided to make it permanent, which is a very good thing, so we don't have to do this every other year. And that's what this resolution is looking for, is to make the residential parking, which we requested in certain areas, to make that a permanent state.
Okay, so both bills are worded the same, and I will read some part of it, but just to be clear, I mean, there had been a parking problem near the train station. People were coming from all over Westchester, and I think even New Jersey, to park on the street so they could then use the train and get free parking, and it created a lot of traffic and problems downtown. So in response to the residents' complaints, we looked into it, and we did do, asked the state to do a home rule, and I think it's worked out pretty well. I know, Maury, you live in that area, so it's worked out pretty well. And, you know, there were some problems in the beginning, but I think we tweaked it, and everything's working out well. So, you know, I think we should continue it, and just so everyone is aware of it, it would cover the westerly side of Broadway from Oak Street to Livingston Avenue, Oak Street from Broadway to the municipal parking lot behind 112 Main Street, Elm Street from Broadway to the municipal parking lot behind 112 Main Street, Chestnut Street from Broadway to Main Street, Walnut Street from Broadway to Livingston Avenue, Half Terrace from Broadway to Walnut Street, Palisade Street from Cedar Street to Chestnut Street, Riverside Place, and Cedar Street from Main Street to point 750 feet west of Palisade Street, and the village-owned portion of Draper Lane. And we're asking them both to make it a permanent law. So is there a motion for this?
Can I just, to get two clarifications or questions? These are the same areas that have been, so we're just renewing essentially.
Renewing it and making it permanent.
And by permanent, the village would still have a right to change this if three years, five years from now the.
Oh, yeah.
Traffic patterns change, we could change it again, either adding more streets or taking streets out, so.
I don't think we can add.
We can do it with state permission.
By home rule?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the reason home rule, just for edification purposes, the reason home rule requests or required is because public streets are held for the benefit of the public at large. So since you are going to undertake a program of restricting parking in certain areas on public streets, you have to ask permission of the state legislature. So that's what a home rule message is. You're asking the Senate, and you're asking the House. The bills are identical, to permit you to restrict parking on public roadways.
And every municipality has to do this for?
If they restrict.
For residential parking.
If they restrict parking on public streets, yes.
For anything that is a locality, for a locality. It is not required in the sense that it is a law, but it is past practices, and the Assembly and Senate will not pass something if they do not have it.
And this was actually established prior to me being elected, and I do have to say that I was very heavily involved because I was heavily affected, but I know that there are so many people that had been affected. And as the mayor addressed, there were some changes that we needed to do because as a result of this, it created some other problems, but those were also resolved. So I think that at this time, it has been working wonderful for everybody that was affected by it.
Yeah, I think it does, so. Okay, so is there a motion for this? Trustee Casal, second trustee Taylor, all in favor? Not passes. Number two, authorize the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Scott Broccoli for valet parking. Again, Charlene, can you expound upon this?
Sure. This was discussed at the last meeting for the valet parking. Laurel Lee has negotiated back and forth, and what we have in terms of the contract, I think Laurel Lee would be better able to state them since she wrote them.
Sure. This memorandum of agreement has two parts. First of all, it's an agreement to provide, the village to provide a license to use particular space of public parking for a pilot program. The memorandum of agreement sets forth the terms of this pilot program, and this pilot program will encourage valet parking by anyone who needs to use it on the street for any reason on Cedar between the dinner hours of the weekend. So it would be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then on Thursdays as well. So we're doing this as a trial at the request of Mr. Broccoli. It will benefit all the businesses and individuals who need to use Cedar Street and park during the periods of congestion later in the day when the traffic may be held up due to the red light and the, and the need for, it hopefully will eliminate the double parking that is occurring at this point. So anyone can sign on to it, and the terms of the agreement is, Mr. Broccoli will be contracting directly with a valet services company, a professional valet services company. They will be undertaking the liability insurance. The village is simply providing a license to use two designated spaces. The village will not be out any parking fees as a condition of the license would be for Mr. Broccoli to pay the village the cost of what parking in those meters would be during the times they would be in effect. So in essence, it's an hour on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays because the parking restrictions finish at 6:00. Is that right?
No, it's supposed to be for the whole time.
Oh, okay. So there would be any out-of-pocket expense for the village. This will be a trial period, and you'll be able to assess as a board due to updates and reports, residents' opinions, surveys. You can do what you'd like because you might be able to repeat this process on other streets where there's congestion concerns with pedestrian and cars double parking.
Right, so just to be clear, this would take parking spots, meter numbers 107 and 106 on the north side of Cedar Street, which are adjacent to 24 and 32 Cedar Street, and it will go, be in effect for an initial period of nine months, Thursday evenings between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m., and Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings between 5:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. And I think this is a good first start. We can try it here and see how it works. It's a busy section. We have to give Scott credit for trying something different, and, you know, people always complain that they can't go to the restaurant, or they don't want to go downtown because they can't find the parking spot. Even though there are parking spots, they don't want to go too far. So I think this would alleviate that problem, so I think it's a good first start. So is any other discussion? Anybody want to say anything?
Questions?
Sure.
Is, in here, is Scott tracking the use of it, and how, how often, or can we get that, like, once a month to know how many people are doing it?
Sure, we can ask, and I'm sure that, you know, it doesn't really have to be in the body of the agreement that you can do that. It's actually in that he's required no less than.
To report.
Yeah, to report, no less than, because really, you're using this as a model.
Right, because it's a test. I just want to make sure that we have a way of tracking it and that we have that info again.
And you have the ability after three months, if it's a smashing success, to terminate the pilot and create a permanency of sorts, and, you know, there's all sorts of options to revise it, to what's working, what's not working. You can, you know, as he comes in to give the report, you can offer suggestions, he can offer suggestions, and you can go forward with whatever you need to do.
And if someone's going to use it and then eat at Tomatillo, then does anyone have to do anything? Does Tomatillo have to connect with Scott or with us?
What's going to happen there, we're having it as far away from possible from us because we don't really want to be involved in the valet business. But it's been made clear, and it's understood even by the chamber, that if someone wants to use the valet system, they would pay Scott for it, because Scott is paying for the valet service. And they would figure out how much it costs per car.
So if they come to us asking how they can get involved, do we tell them to go to Scott?
Exactly.
And they will be working directly with Scott?
Yes.
Do we know what the cost is going to be?
No, I do not, no.
I think he gave us a general number, but he wasn't sure about the cost.
Yeah, he hasn't entered into a contract with them. But it's their cost, it's his cost.
Well, I'm sorry, so is this, is, if a resident drives down on Saturday night, parks, and they're gonna eat at Rarebit, would they pay?
No. He's not, he's not gonna charge.
If they, if they charge a certain, if they eat, I think he said, like, 50, he has to decide the amount, but he's gonna pick an amount, and if it's over $50, he won't charge. If someone goes in for two beers, he may decide to charge them.
So if, but then if somebody goes to Tomatillo, they would be charged?
Well, it depends on the agreement with Tomatillo, you know.
But yes, generally.
If Tomatillo decides that they're gonna pay for it, otherwise, then there will be a charge, and I don't know what that is.
They can develop their own program, that Tomatillo, if they want to validate 100% or if they want to have a sliding scale, but now they can promote it as an option for their customers and patrons, and hopefully the goal is, is to increase the viability and the attractiveness of the businesses along Cedar.
I think Scott said that he was like the valet, when you pull up, you would pay them.
Yeah.
To use it, so it doesn't really matter where they're going, but he would be then offering discounts.
Or reimbursement, essentially.
At his place.
I see what you're saying.
Or Tomatillo can make an agreement with.
So it would be the same, it would basically be the same for anybody?
Yeah, yeah, but Scott's, you know, controlling it. So I'm not, that's the question I have, is that, does Tomatillo really have to do anything with Scott if somebody, like, they don't know if somebody's gonna go and use the valet and then go to Tomatillo? Like, Tomatillo doesn't know that unless it's signage. Anyway, all details that Scott is the person who's figuring out.
And the Chamber of Commerce is very much in favor. We spoke with, with.
If any of the businesses on Main Street are interested in participating, they also should contact Scott.
Right. And they said that, you know, if it works out, they'd be excited and hopefully explore another spot down there, like.
But I just, I just really encourage the community to please keep your eyes open and get involved and give us feedback because, again, this is a nine-month trial period, and then we need to really understand how is impacting the community in a positive or in a negative way.
Okay, so I think we're ready to move on this, so we don't even need a vote on this, it's just an authorize, authorization, or?
We should, we should.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Scott Broccoli for valet parking? Trustee Casal, second, trustee Drazie, all in favor? Okay. Was that your first vote, Mike, or?
Yeah.
Congratulations. Consider a motion to approve audits number one and number two for February 2020 as recommended by the village treasurer. Jeff, do you want to talk about this for a second or two?
Excuse me, yeah, this is just the claims audit that we've processed, we've instituted. If there's any questions that I could answer.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, so is there a motion to approve audits number one and two for February 2020 as recommended by the village treasurer? Trustee Taylor, trustee Drazie, second, all in favor? And abstain? Trustee Patino. Consider a motion to award the request for proposal for the village's bond council to the law offices of Jeffrey Storch as recommended by the village treasurer. So Jeff, can you talk about this?
Sure, sure. A couple months back, we sent out an RFP for bond council, not because we had any problems with the current firm, but because they're, you know, a really big firm based in the city, and we're a relatively small operation here at the village, and we wanted to see if we could bring down the cost for bond council for the taxpayers. And as it turns out, we can. We analyzed the pricing of several firms with Charlene's help. Mr. Storch's fees appear to be the best that we received. He has 20 years of experience in and currently focuses on municipal law with a particular focus on Westchester County. And, you know, he's in a number of the villages and towns in this surrounding area, Irvington, Terrytown, Sleepy Hollow, Briar Cliff, Manor, Pelham, Marymount, Tuckahoe, North Castle, Mount Vernon, Peekskill. So with his background, with his background, he can do an excellent job for the village at saving the taxpayers' own cost.
Okay, is there a motion for this? Is there a motion for this? Trustee Taylor, second, trustee now? All in favor? And Mike, are you abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. You're allowed two abstentions in a day, that's it.
I should have saved that.
Consider a motion to authorize the salary step increase for Daniel Romer, Assistant Building Inspector, to grade, a Roman numeral you're going to give me at this stage, grade fifteen, step four, for a salary of ninety thousand, one hundred and four dollars and sixty-nine cents effective January sixteenth, twenty-twenty, as recommended by Mr. Ed Manley, Building Inspector. Charlene?
Not only do I recommend it, I recommend it very, very strongly. Dan Romer has, this is a regular course of events. It's in the contract, this is what they get. However, I haven't rarely seen a employee so deserving. He has done wonders with the Embassy Center under Ed's guidance also, but he certainly deserves it.
Okay. Is there a motion? Trustee Taylor, second, trustee DeRozzi, all in favor? That passes six zero. Consider a motion to schedule a public hearing on March tenth, twenty-twenty, for review of the site plan application for forty-one Street is Cedar Street at six-thirty PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard. So I think, Charlene, they were initially going, we were going to do this next week and then something came up?
Two weeks. Uh, yes. Christina, the architect, requested that we put that off. This is the Cabrini one, I'm sorry.
No, this is.
No.
This is forty-one.
Forty-one.
Yeah. She requested that we put it over to March tenth because there was a previous engagement on February twenty-fifth and we spoke and, and I, I think it was, Christina would be very important, so presentation, I think that would be, yeah.
Okay. So I just want to read that the resolution is that, will be put over as the date that I've indicated, for the purpose of reviewing an application for site plan approval for improvements consisting of a mixed-use building containing fifteen residential units, two of which will be restricted as affordable, and approximately two thousand square feet of retail space, onsite parking and pocket garden as property located at forty-one Cedar Street, also known as forty-three dash forty-five Cedar Street. Is there a motion for that? Trustee now, second trustee Casal, all in favor? That passes six votes. And consider a motion to approve a request for Mr. Tim Harnett, Dobbs Ferry Youth Little League, to have the Dobbs Ferry Youth Little League Parade on Saturday, April eighteenth, twenty-twenty, beginning at nine AM. Is there a motion for that?
Where does that parade go down, just from us?
Um, I think I could read that for you.
Me?
We will, it says that beginning at the Dobbs Ferry High School and ending at Memorial Park, the parade will begin at nine AM. We will turn right onto Broadway, right on Cedar, left on Main, right on Chestnut, and left on Palisades. You have all that?
Is there graphics?
Ending at Memorial.
Yeah.
Is there a motion for that? I think, Mike, maybe this could be your first motion.
Go ahead, Mike.
There you go. Trustee Patino, second, trustee now, all in favor? Okay, and that passes. I think that's it. As far as the minutes go, there was something in the minutes that I just wanted to clarify. On page one, I indicated that trustee Taylor is excused this evening and that trustee Sullivan would not, would be arriving late. And he does not think that trustee, trustee Sullivan had an opportunity to go. That last line was referring to the visiting the one-fifteen Broadway Cabrini parking lot. So I think that should go just below into the next category regarding the public hearing regarding Cabrini. So if we could just make that change. I don't have anything else for the minutes. Is anybody else? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
As revised.
As revised. Trustee DeRozzi, second, trustee now, all in favor with one abstention. Reports and announcements. Trustee DeRozzi, do you have anything?
It's very ironic that I hear the comment from.
Let's just, just so I clarify, I'm sorry. Trustee Taylor abstained as well. Although I don't think he has to technically, but he did abstain, so that should show that. Okay, I'm sho, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just want to highlight that for the streets that they are closer to the train station and even though there is residential parking permit, I highly, highly ask some of our residents to please be mindful of how you're parking. I have noticed in many, many occasions that people just carelessly park, take into parking spaces too far away from the corner and we have to be mindful that we have a serious parking issue in the village. So if you are parking, please think about the other person that might be coming home and might need a parking. I have been experiencing that myself, so that's why I feel so conviction, disconviction to make this announcement because we have to be more aware of how we're parking and thinking of the other residents on our block. Thank you.
Um, trustee Patino, do you have anything?
Come on, Mike. Nothing.
Trustee Taylor.
I don't have anything this evening.
Trustee now.
Chamber of Commerce, River Towns Chamber meeting is on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, at six-thirty at Harper's. And we're always looking for volunteers, so go to dobbsferry.com and press volunteer now to join one of our four and six committees.
Okay, and trustee vice, I mean, deputy, deputy mayor Casal, what do you have?
Just senior Valentine party this Friday.
At what time? Eleven o'clock.
Eleven, yeah.
Okay, that crosses that off.
You're going to have to do that.
Okay. I have a few announcements. Just so everyone should know that Monday, February seventeenth, Village Hall, Village Court, Public Library, Recreation Department, Dobbs Ferry Seniors, and DPW will be closed for President's Day. The library will be having a cult classic movie night on February thirteenth at eight o'clock. The movie will be High Fidelity. February fourteenth at one o'clock is a movie matinee, Rocket Man. And Tuesday, February eighteenth, a vacation movie at three o'clock, The Lion King. So you should check those out. The senior events, Donna referred to the February fourteenth party. There's also going to be a movie on Monday at twelve forty-five, Judy, which will be at Main Street Firehouse, so that should be something, this is good to see, right? Okay. I also have music and munchies, Sunday, February twenty-third, from three-thirty to four forty-five at the Greenberg Hebrew Center at five fifteen Broadway. There'll be yummy sweets and healthy treats, all are welcome. And the library wanted everyone to know, the staff of the library, the library trustees, and the friends of Dobbs Ferry Public Library wants everyone to know that a memorial service in celebration of the life of Cheryl Matthews, the children's librarian, will be held on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty, at eleven o'clock. All are welcome to attend, especially the children she loved to serve. So, I mean, that's a great tribute, that's eleven o'clock. And I just want everyone to know that the Dobbs Ferry Planning Board will conduct a site walk of the property at one-fifty-six Palisades Street on Sunday, February sixteenth, at ten AM. Okay. That concludes the televised portion of the board of trustees meeting. We're going to adjourn the meeting into a work session. The public is welcome to watch. Public cannot necessarily participate in this work session, but if you have anything and you'd like to be recognized, we'll see what we can do depending on the time constraints. So the work session is a discussion with the principals of Children's Village regarding conceptual plans concerning their property. Who is here for Children's Village?